Two, and each to section two B, the very last line. They asked us to add a sentence that said, "The city will begin publishing its notice as soon as possible after receiving the appraisal." It's a simple thing to do because after receiving the appraisal, we will want to publish. I don't know particularly why they were worried about it, but they wanted us to do it quickly, so apparently no one had too much objection to that one. Under two E, they added a clause right in the middle of the first sentence that said, "The city agrees to maintain the bus stop at Life Step Campus," and here's what they added, "and provide transportation to and from the vicinity of the Thyra Thompson State Building." So, seems like something our bus is going to do anyway, and no one had too much objection to that. On the next page, page three, section three A, we originally had that the county would pay the costs for the things we have to do under Wyoming Statute fifteen one 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 two B, which is the appraisal, publishing, and those sorts of things.
And the survey.
And the survey. So, they wanted to say that we will just pass along the vendor charges for that, not all costs. I think they may have been worried that we were going to charge city time for it, I don't know. But, we weren't going to do that, so it didn't really change anything substantive. And the last item is, we originally had a provision in there that they would build a six-foot fence along the north barrier that was aesthetically pleasing. They didn't really like that language, so they said, "A six-foot vinyl privacy fence or other alternative that's reasonably acceptable to the city."
Fair enough.
So, that's the changes that are now in your packet and updated as of this afternoon about an hour ago.
I would assume everybody's okay with that. It's right in line with what we did anyway, right? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Wallace. All right, get home while you can.
Thanks, Wallace.
See you back here tomorrow morning, 'cause the city's staying open.
(laughing)
Uh, Mr. City Manager, Rocky Mountain Power update.
Yes, we are lucky today to have our friend, Mr. Morrissey from Rocky Mountain, to walk us through some of our activities that are happening locally and maybe perhaps even around the state. He's a guru for Rocky Mountain. And I was told too that he would entertain questions as well.
I'd be glad to do that. Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Counselor, thank you for having me. Thanks for inviting me and helping me set this up, Carter. So, this conversation started about actually three months ago. I was sitting at Carter's conference room table, and we were just discussing a lot of what we're gonna talk about today, and Carter said, "Well, you know, that might be valuable, to do something similar to what we talked about tonight, so you guys have a feel and understanding about utilities." I don't know how much you know about utilities, so I apologize if I insult anybody's intelligence tonight, but I'll start out pretty much with the basics. So, this is what I'm gonna talk about today. Where we serve in Wyoming, where our price comparisons lie nationally and statewide, how does Rocky Mountain Power get bulk electric power or transmission power? What are the new power plans? Our transmission and distribution guys? Well, I was gonna have three others here tonight, but they're busy making sure lights stay on tonight, so I waved them off. I said, "I got this." And then lastly, but probably close to your heart, is how does Casper benefit from the franchise? I have some numbers I can give you. So, this is the blue, the light blue versus the gray is where we serve. So, we have, we have a lot of the major towns, Laramie, this little island here, Laramie, of course, Casper, Douglas, Glen Rock area, and then up into the Big Horn Basin and down into southwest Wyoming. And I promise to go as quickly as I can, 'cause I know that everybody's probably aware of the snow. So, we have about a hundred forty-eight thousand meters throughout the state. Roughly a thousand Wyoming employees with that type of payroll, it's pretty significant. And then we pay that much in annual property taxes. Twenty-two million dollars is not insignificant. And then, we pay those taxes on three point four, three point five billion in total assets. And then we have a giving campaign that a lot of nonprofits benefit from, right here in the Casper area. I don't have it broken down on what Casper gets, but statewide, it's about six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. This is how power is delivered, not only in Wyoming, but a lot of western states. There are sometimes investor-owned utilities, in Wyoming, there's three: Rocky Mountain Power, Black Hills, and Montana-Dakota Utilities up in Sheridan. And then we have rural electrics. That's how we powered the west in the forties with the REAs, getting power through that list of REAs. You probably may have cabins that are out in rural areas that get power from those REAs, or friends, family that may get power from them. Any questions so far? Okay. We're always modernizing our grid, lots of computer enhancements, watching for faults, trying to maintain the reliability. We have diverse energy resources, everything from wind, there is solar in Wyoming, hydroelectric, as well as thermal or coal-fired and some natural gas-driven steam turbines. And then we have lots of innovation and partnership conversations, all sorts of different entities. And it's a big investment in Wyoming. Here's a map of the U.S., and it shows, without getting you too tied down to comparing all the numbers, Wyoming is the lowest, right now, on average, of all fifty states. And, there's big benefactors of that. So, I know power is a bill that you don't ignore, but it's not glamorous. Like, it might be if you live in Hawaii, where you're paying more than four times the cost of power here, or California, you're paying more than two and a half times the power. And within Wyoming, this is where our car rates fall. Lower Valley Energy, anybody know where that is? That's overended. What's that?
In the lower valley?
Teton County. Yeah, but very good.
Close, right?
I like how you made the connection, just like.
Right.
Yeah, we get a lot of hydroelectric power, so that generated power is very inexpensive. So, how do we generate power that gets to Casper? Thermal, steam-driven power turbines, either coal-fired or natural gas, I talked about those. Renewable sources, that's the wind and the solar, and you see a lot of that north of Glen Rock, a bit north in the Evansville area, and then a lot of it over in Congress County, and then hydroelectric dams, as we all know. And they enjoy recreating on Seminole, Cortez, or not Cortez as much, but Pathfinder and Alkova, and then Yellowtail way up in Fort Smith, Montana. I don't have the operations team, they're off making sure the lights stay on tonight. So, those three guys are new. Within the last fifteen months, we've got two from California, and I made them pledge that they didn't bring their California attitudes here.
Good man.
Yeah. But Michael Morley is from Arizona, and they're all good guys, but they're all on shift to make sure the lights stay on tonight. This is a breakdown of the Casper area and the circuits, I'm not gonna get into those details. This is our reliability. This chart means the most to the fellow that had to leave early. Wallace used to ride us, probably about fifteen years ago, about reliability. The number here is where our outage minutes are basically, it doesn't impress much, 'cause we're only a month into the year or thereabouts, but this is our goal, the blue line, stay below that, we're in good shape, so. This is our investments that are going in inside of the Casper district, so that impact you guys. And, that's it. Short and sweet, Rocky Mountain Power in a nutshell, but I'm sure there's questions, and if there's not, my feelings won't be hurt, 'cause everybody's thinking about going home. Jenna?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Counselor.
So, what about Bitcoin? You hear about that stuff going on? So, we have that, what is that? High-wire, high-wire energy?
They are, they're in bar none, and they're opening another one in Evansville. We've got two in the city of Casper, and they're adding to the bottom line, every time they turn, every time Bitcoin goes up in value, they turn on more Bitcoin mining machines and add more.
More funds for Casper, city of Casper.
Franchise.
See where I'm going?
So, yeah, you're collecting, I think we're at probably a hundred thousand dollars a month in the electric charges about, or thereabouts, for Bitcoin. And for every hundred thousand dollars, it equates to seven thousand dollars more per month, so that the city of Casper has more income, more revenue. So, that's a good thing.
Please, sir.
It is a good thing, thank you.
Yes.
So, for the electric cars, what does that do in terms of risk?
It's really not treated anything differently, any differently than any other move, Bitcoin as an example, or a new subdivision. We analyze that this charging station, for instance, Hat Six has a new charging station. I recognize that's not what any Casper city does, but as an example, they ask for nine hundred kilowatts, doesn't necessarily mean much to you all, they ask for a set load off of a certain circuit. But we go trace that circuit all the way back to the substation. Do we have enough power at the substation? Does the transformer have enough capacity? And then, we make that new customer, that new EV charging facility, put in protective circuits, so that if they have a fault when they're charging their cars, or for whatever reason, there's an inadvertent ground, it will open that breaker and not affect the rest of the circuit.
So, as a follow-up, I guess, because they're pushing EVs so much more than before, and so, are you guys prepared in the next ten years to just have everybody having EVs at their homes and extra charging stations everywhere, because that's putting a pressure on the power grid?
It is. And Bitcoin was the first one that really identified where weaknesses are. People in their garages were turning on Bitcoin mining machines and blowing up neighborhood transformers. And we were having to go out and identify those people and upgrade those transformers and upgrade that circuit at their cost, not at all of us as ratepayers combined cost, or shared cost, I should say. I would imagine EVs will be the same, and hopefully, they're not all gonna be turned on at once. We get a gradual approach, and we can keep up with it. But do we have enough power? Yes. Casper has plenty of power coming from Yellowtail, coming from Dave Johnston Power Plant, coming from the wind farms. There's no shortage of power in eastern, we call eastern Wyoming, which is, this is our eastern reach of Wyoming, in our service area. There's plenty of power, it's a matter of logically doing it, so that we don't break the network.
Mr. Kathy?
I know they claim that cost of generation is cheaper for wind than it is for either your gas turbines or coal, but by the same token, the more wind we put in, or solar, we are having to go ahead at the same time and build another power plant to take over for that when it goes down. So...
I'm listening still. I'm just gonna get something I think I can help answer that way.
Okay. And basically, we are, we are building a wind farm, and we are building then a backup, not a coal, but a natural gas plant, to back that up if the wind doesn't blow. So, it's gotta be there, and we've gotta build it, and we've gotta man it twenty-four seven, so our costs just keep going up.
Right, because you have to have what we call, what turn-on-able, or turn-off-able, or dispatchable power.
Absolutely.
It needs to be, it needs to be available when the sun is not shining and the wind is not blowing. And I just passed, if you could share this, it's a quick picture of...
And so, I guess...
Can I give you the light? No, I'm sorry. You should get to that.
With all of that said...
And we don't need you.
How are the renewable people able to justify renewables? Is it just basically because we're gonna have cleaner air supposedly, or what?
I think a lot of the justification comes from that, that in fact, they believe there's cleaner air, because you're not burning a fuel, whether it's natural gas, whether it's coal, whatever. But, yeah, they don't look upon what you've just brought up, they're not looking beyond saying, "What happens when that doesn't turn on?" However, what I did pass out, and I erroneously passed out some of these histogram, it's the, it's the picture I wanted you to look at. That is a mechanical or potential energy battery called pumped hydrostorage. Some of you have been, I'm sure, to Seminole, maybe all of you have been to Seminole, it's a big reservoir north of Sinclair that feeds into Cortez, and then Pathfinder, and so on, down the north plat. The idea is you would build a storage facility, another reservoir, several hundreds to thousands of feet, and I think that one's like two thousand feet above Seminole, and you pump up the water when the wind is blowing, and when the wind stops, or it becomes nighttime, and you need the power for the grid, you would allow that water to flow downhill through a hydroelectric dam, and for up to ten hours, you could power, meet power demands that normally are met by wind. But what happens if it stops for two days? You don't get, which is unusual, but if it, if it didn't blow for two days or longer, then we'd have to have those dispatchable assets. So, we're looking at building a nuclear power plant in Kemmer. Everybody here, I'm guessing, has heard about that, and I'm imagining we're going to do more. Bill Gates' company, TerraPower, wants to build more nuclear power plants for Pacific Corp. for that very reason, to displace or replace coal-fired power plants. And, that seems to be a little bit of a rub. It's, it meets the low CO2 or low CO2 footprint, but it's nuclear. So, now you have, you have that tug-of-war going on.
Well, we've also got coal down to negative emissions now. We're negative on the carbon footprint.
And if you can do it with carbon capture utilization and storage, that's great. Unfortunately, that adds about a hundred and fifty million dollars per unit to do that. And maybe that is what is gonna happen, and that might be part of the solution, it will be part of the solution.
My question becomes, so, if I can, as a follow-up, you mentioned the nuclear, normally you think of nuclear as base load, because they don't start up quickly, that's part of the issue with the coal plants. You can't just start them up quickly as compared to the gas turbines.
Right.
So, now, how does that play into the backup, the on-demand feature that you're needing for wind?
A lot, and a lot of that type of planning happens at our dispatch center in Salt Lake and in Portland. They know that between seven AM and nine AM, or thereabouts, people are using utilities, they're starting up their day, they're turning lights on, and they know they've gotta meet a certain peak, certain peak power. Same thing happens in the afternoon, two, three o'clock in the afternoon, they start firing up those loads, and they plan for it. Like coal, for instance, out of Dave Johnston and Jim Bridger, they'll run it at twenty to twenty-five percent of capacity, basically just spinning that turbine, and then as the demand peaks, come up, they fire, or they start allowing more of those breakers to be shut, and you can start loading down the coal turbine, the coal-fired turbine as needed. So, we've been doing this long enough, we see a trend. Every day, we see that trend, and we know what people do, and it even gets different between weekdays and weekends.
But you're not gonna be able to accommodate the no-wind days, so to speak, with nuclear.
Yeah, because the nuclear's got, like you said, you can't just turn it on and turn it off. So, you've gotta keep that almost in a, sometimes maybe it's, it's just spinning, keeping its turbines, 'cause nuclear is just a source of heat, that generates steam, that drives a turbine.
You bet.
And the question is, how fast are you driving that turbine? Maybe you're only running it twenty percent, but as the wind dies off, okay, now we have to ramp up, and you can do that a little bit faster.
Okay.
And we're gonna give you one more question, and then we've gotta move on.
Absolutely.
Mr. Dan Ross.
It wasn't a question, well, I guess it is a question, but in regards to storage capacity for nuclear, what isn't the plan for the TerraPower Station in Kemmer, doesn't have a storage capacity component to it?
Yes.
Molten salt, you know, it's like the, kinda like pumping up the water, but it has that energy and storage?
It's a thermal storage. So, you pump it into this big, for lack of a better term, a Yeti cooler, and that holds the heat in much, much longer. So, you've got this molten salt, ready to go to, to convert, to basically make steam out of water and drive turbines. And so, if you're only at three hundred megawatts, but you need to plus up for a couple hours to five hundred megawatts, it will have that capability. So, you just, you just open the right valves, port that molten salt over to the steam generators, make more steam, and you can turn the turbines up higher to be able to handle that load. So, it's lots to talk about, but yes, we'll...
And we will have four-eyed, three-legged children running around like Chernobyl, and we'll be rocking in Wyoming. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So, my background is nuclear submarines. I drove them, ran them, operated the nuclear power plant. That's called a light water reactor at two thousand PSI. This is gonna be run at almost ambient pressure.
Nice.
Which makes it much safer, no containments, no releases. There's always gonna be risks, but it's a pretty darn cool design, and I think pretty safe.
Well, we would like to thank you very much for coming.
Glad to do it.
Very informative, and appreciate it. Very informative and appreciated.
Anytime you want to refresh, let me know.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, just trying to stay on schedule here. Mr. City Manager, Council Goals Review. This is, I'm assuming, from our stint at the Ford Wyoming Center together.
Yes, sir, it is indeed. And basically what this is, Mr. Mayor and councilors, is a follow-up to that night to ensure that what we've captured by way of the larger goals and the larger objectives, that they are consistent with what you thought was your directives, if you will, as a result of that evening. And if so, we will take this list and flesh it out, as it were, with regard to, with regard to to-do items that staff would sort of populate the space with, and then of course, bring back as a final form, if you will, for you to consider. Many of you who were around during the last Council Goals process, that constituted some 98 items of to-do things, if you will. And, you know, I don't know if it'll be 98 items, hopefully it'll be somewhere south of that a little bit, but that's my hope.
So we can actually get them done?
And therefore, that's what you can expect to see from here. So if you're good with what you see in front of you, the larger objectives meet your, your goals that you had in mind, then I think we can move forward with that, with that sort of more mundane work.
Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning that? So we are, looks like we're good to go, sir. So it's all up to the staff now.
All right, all right, thank you. We will do that.
Well, that was quick. By the way, before we move on, don't forget tonight to make sure you log into the team meeting so that you, we can use our hands. We don't need them in here, but out there we will. Okay, moving on, Agenda Review, Mr. City Manager, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilors, I think the bigger item that we were going to cover in this topic was with respect to the, to the MOU, yep, regarding 12th and Conwell. As far as other items are concerned, I don't know that I have really anything else to bring up.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Kyle?
Yes, thank you. I thought I had seen at one point a discussion with our new city attorney on Home Rule. I thought I saw that on the agenda at one point, but now I can't find it. I was just curious when that's slated for discussion.
I'm lost.
I brought it up, it is what Richard Johnson and Cheyenne City Council are using to decriminalize cannabis, and it's what Barnine and Mills are using to discontinue publishing in the Casper Star Tribune. It's a provision. And I was hoping our new city attorney could fill us in a little bit on what his perspective is on those two incidences, and I guess what the, what he believes Home Rule can be used for.
Mayor, Council, that had not hit my radar, but I certainly have some finishing thoughts, but I'm happy to take that. The Council on, I'll take Home Rule and its implications for those types of issues.
Why don't you, why don't you take the next couple weeks, and maybe you can bring something to us during the Agenda Review on the next work session in two weeks?
Sounds good, yeah.
Can I give you some time?
Yep.
Okay. Okay with you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have anything concerning the agenda, or future thereof? No? All right, we're rocking. So we will end this one, and you'll have about 20 minutes before we adjourn in chambers.
Go brush your cars off.
I stuck my, I stuck my things up in the air.
Me too.
My things, my, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We'll get started. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind you to silence your cellphones. Council meetings are televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. I now call the February 21st, 2023 regular council meeting to order. All councilors are present. The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action. Oh, I guess we don't have to do that. We are good to go. Please join Counselor Gamroth in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gamroth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the February 21st, 2023 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Pollak, seconded by Counselor Inger Brethson. Thank you. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Now's the time. We invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name. Direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will be, council may respond to personnel, will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. No attacks on staff or council. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by councilors. Presentations will be limited to five minutes. The duplication of speakers will not be allowed nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment, period, and please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. Is there anyone that would like to approach the lectern at this time? All right, very good. We'll move on. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance amending the general provisions of the Casper Municipal Code. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Eric Nelson to J. Carter Napier dated February 17th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 13th, 2023.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I do. Good evening, everybody. This is the vehicle by which we are introducing the term counselor into the paradigm of the ordinances and so forth, as well as dealing with a couple of matters as it relates to criminal procedure. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, if I could yield to the city attorney to discuss that smaller part of the ordinance, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. In this ordinance, there are some proposed changes. Basically, these are not substantive changes. It's would essentially be codifying the adoption of, I mean, rules of criminal procedure and other court rules and procedures and statutes which are already being utilized in the municipal court. What this would do is basically is a housekeeping matter would put them in one spot within the ordinances for ease of reference. There were a couple of changes that were made as a lot of this language comes from state statute, but some of it addressed felony level charges and since municipal court does not address those, there were some minor changes, but nothing really substantively changing the way the municipal court is run.
Very good. Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes. No duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance amending general provisions to please approach the lectern. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance amending general provisions to please approach the lectern. All right, there being no one to speak for or against an ordinance amending general provisions, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04, General Provisions.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Inger Brethson, seconded by Counselor Kathy. Discussion? Amendments? Very good. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the annual renewal of liquor licenses. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremmel to J. Carter Napier dated January 17th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 6th, 2023. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated February 16th, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, thank you. This is the opportunity by which council has the chance to consider renewals for the annual exercises you go through every year as it relates to all of the liquor licenses and so forth that have been proposed for renewal. There are typically some instances where some licenses are not renewed and others are transferred and so forth throughout the body of the year. And in this particular circumstance, particularly when it comes to your annual consideration, council essentially recognizes certain stipulations that are in place as well. Those stipulations are listed in your memo, the primary number of which are associated with licenses that were issued with address definitions that are consistent with the renewals that you see here today. There is also one more stipulation as it relates to an ownership requirement for Frosty Liquor. And beyond that, Mr. Mayor and counselor, as you've learned in the work session on this matter, staff has no further considerations as it relates to recommendations for nonrenewal or concerns for licenses that are parked too long or any of those kinds of situations.
Thank you, sir. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the annual renewal of liquor licenses to please approach the lectern. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the annual renewal of liquor licenses to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the annual renewal of liquor licenses, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action authorize the annual renewal of liquor licenses.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Kathy. Discussion? I would like to make a comment. The press so eloquently took out of context what was said last week and which is just so absolutely irritating to me. The point I was trying to make, which I wish they would have picked up on, and what I would like to see this council start moving towards, is stopping the renewal of liquor licenses to those establishments who repeatedly violate by selling alcohol to minors. It is not difficult to look at a driver's license. It is not difficult to see how old somebody is. And we're literally walking in handing licenses that show they're 20 years old and we're still serving them. Now, whether we're not teaching our employees good enough to understand what that date actually means is beyond me, but I would really like to see us get to zero tolerance when it comes to serving minors. And so I'm going to be taking a really hard look next year at these numbers and the repeat offenders are going to have a really hard time getting renewed, by me at least. So, does anybody else have anything they need to add? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollak abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
No, yeah. It's a malt beverage, so she'll still need to. Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of issuance of a special malt beverage permit number one for Spuds Baseball Club. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremmel to J. Carter Napier dated February 3rd, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 13th, 2023. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated February 3rd, 2023. Exhibit number four, liquor license application filed January 20th, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselors, this is the opportunity that the council has to renew one of our more unique licenses, albeit to a new holder. Council is familiar with this type of a permit being at Lansing Field, assigned to the Horseheads Organization. In this circumstance, however, we will be potentially issuing this license with your approval to the Spuds Baseball Organization. And the requirements and so forth would be very consistent with what you've seen in the past as well, carrying over to the expectations with this particular issuance if council approves.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of a special malt beverage permit to Spuds Baseball to please approach the lectern. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of a special malt beverage permit to Spuds Baseball to please approach the lectern. All right, there being no one to speak for or against the issuance of a special malt beverage permit to Spuds Baseball, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion by minute action to authorize the issuance of new special malt beverage permit number one for Spuds Baseball Club, LLC, doing business as Spuds Baseball located at 330 Katy Lane.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Pollak noted will be abstained. Okay, please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollak abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Now we can retrieve. Yes, sir. Yes, please. Thank you. Come in, go back. Come in, go back. Okay, second reading ordinance on flag lots. Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17.08 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of flag lots.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollak, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, discussion? Sir, did you want to approach?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bob Hopkins. I live at 405 South Beach. And I come to speak on 1708. I sent some notes to you folks last weekend because I couldn't be here. But this goes back January 10th, a work session, a citizen realtor came in and requested that the 24-foot wide flagpole on a flaglot be reduced to 12 feet. While I still have some problems with that issue, there are some other issues we need to talk about, I think, too. On the 17th, the council scheduled public hearing for February 7th, which corresponded to the first reading. And that's where I provided the written comments, basically talking about safety issues and for our people that have to get fire trucks and ambulances in. I still think that's a significant issue. I remain concerned about public safety. However, with the significant change to this ordinance, it seems unusual that Planning and Zoning Commission was not provided the opportunity to review and change the ordinance to make any recommendations to council. Did not have a chance to recommend anything to council. Normally, citizens would request a variance from planning and zoning in order to get something like this done. That apparently was not done in this case. Therefore, I respectfully would request that council table the ordinance tonight until such time that the Planning and Zoning Commission has a chance to put input into this. It's a significant change. It's literally the guts of the ordinance that's being changed. And so far, the people at Planning and Zoning has not had a chance. The Planning and Zoning Commissioners have not had a chance to weigh in on this. Therefore, I respectfully request that you table this ordinance right now until they get a chance to do it. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
I have a question for the city manager. I was under the impression that this, we did get guidance from P and Z on this. Carter, am I mistaken?
Mr. Mayor, I would have to plead ignorance as it relates to that. I know certainly with respect to your next item, that certainly was the case. But as it relates to this ordinance change, I'd really like to do a little more. change, I'd really like to do a little more research, if you will, in that regard. I have no reason to doubt what former counsel, Ms. Hopkins, is saying, but I can't verify one way or the other.
I guess my preference would be to pass it, if we're going to, on the second ordinance, and then have that information available before the third. The reason I say that, Mr. Hopkins, is we did have the chief of the fire department speak to this as far as the fire trucks and the safety of it, and he was reasonably comfortable with the twelve feet. And that is specific only to current lots that are already constructed mainly in our downtown area. That was amended to a fifteen-foot-wide for any new construction. So, I can offer you that, at least.
I did go back and look at the, I think I went back as far as November to planning and zoning. And one of the two meetings, maybe two of them were canceled, but as far as I could tell from the record, it was never even talked about with planning and zoning.
That very well could be. So what we will do is we will continue down the path that we're on this evening, and regardless of where that falls, we will get some more information before the third reading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray, sorry, Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. This is a question for our City Manager. Can the city council act unilaterally without consulting the P and Z?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, I would say that when it comes to ordinance changes that aren't affecting zoning and those kinds of things, council can act unilaterally. That's not to say that council hasn't sought the opinion of groups like the Planning and Zoning Commission. But in my estimation, I would say, yes, you're within your right to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You bet. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to council on this issue? Counselor Kathy.
I'll get all these buttons working here in a minute. Basically, the particular citizen that Councilmember Hopkins was talking about, or former Councilmember Hopkins was talking about, went to our city planning and zoning people, Mr. Collins primarily. And Mr. Collins was the one that brought this forward. And he felt that it was okay. But as far as going to the rest of the true P and Z Commission, this has never been there.
Well, and it doesn't sound like it needs to be, so.
Okay, yeah. But I had visited with Mr. Collins about it, and he said he was okay with it.
Well, and as part of the discussion, I guess I would say, we have the approval of the Building Department, we have the approval of our Chief of Police, we have the approval of our staff. I think we're well within our bounds to do what we're doing. I wouldn't mind, Mr. City Manager, if you would bring back some information for us before the third reading, but I don't see any reason to hold this up. Vice Mayor?
Again, I don't want to reiterate what you just said, but I think part of it is, is that we can act. And I was, I was pretty sure when I asked you that we can. But I wanted just clarification for the record. So there's that point that we can act unilaterally without the P and Z when we want to change an ordinance. But in the same sense, I do get an understanding where Mr. Hopkins is coming from in the sense of having that conversation with P and Z. But I think we can establish, and we have established precedent where we have acted without the conversation with P and Z to change an ordinance. It's been done many times. So I just want to make sure that that's clarified.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any amendments? Very good. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Second, please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section seventeen point five six point zero three zero of the Casper Municipal Code to reduce the minimum front yard setback requirement in the Park Historic Zoning District.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Inger Breton, seconded by Counselor Pollock, third by Counselor Jensen. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the subject of setbacks for Park Historic? Okay, very good. Any discussion amongst the council, councilors? Very good. Amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Oh, there, now you give, please.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Zone change on South Washington Street. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of the property located at twelve thirty-one, twelve thirty-five, and twelve forty-one South Washington Street. Lots two ninety-four, two ninety-five, and two ninety-six Kenwood addition from zoning classification R-two, one-unit residential to R-three, one-to-four unit residential.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jensen. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the zone change for South Washington Very good. Any discussion? No, amendments? Very good. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Inger Breton abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, please read the consent resolutions.
Nine A-one, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Casper and Natrona County for the transfer of property near twelfth and Conwell Street. Nine A-two, amending providing for the naming of legal depositories and investment firms for two thousand and twenty-three. Nine A-three, authorizing amendment number three to the contract for professional services with State Line Number Seven Architects for design services for the City Hall renovations in addition, project safe. Nine A-four, authorizing an agreement with Trito Construction, LLC, for the solid waste storm water improvements project. Nine A-five, authorizing submission of the capital construction loan application to the State Loan and Investment Board on behalf of the governing body for the City of Casper, Wyoming for the purpose of reconstructing the Aquatic Center roof. Nine A-six, authorizing a settlement agreement and release between the City of Casper, Wyoming and the Westchester Fire Insurance Company. Nine A-seven, approving and adopting the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan for bus transit in the Casper urbanized area.
Thank you. Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only. We just did that, didn't we? Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda items just read. I got ahead of myself.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Inger Breton. City Manager, do you like to comment on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
My goodness. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Ten A-one, authorizing the purchase of one new utility all-terrain vehicle for use by the Casper Fire Department. Ten A-two, authorizing the purchase of one new backhoe loader for use by the Water Distribution Division of the Public Services Department. Ten A-three, authorizing the purchase of one new half-ton four-by-four extended cab pickup truck with six-foot bed for use by the Water Distribution Division of the Public Services Department. Ten A-four, authorizing the purchase of one new mid-size police interceptor utility vehicle for use by the Casper Police Department. Ten A-five, authorizing the purchase of one new utility all-terrain vehicle for use by the Cemetery Division of the Parks, Recreation, and Public Facilities Department. Ten A-six, approving the interim topic list for the two thousand and twenty-four Wyoming Legislature.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Kathy. Thank you. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we ask councilors to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Counselor Bond? Nothing tonight? Thank you. Counselor Kathy?
One of the biggies is I went to, well, first of all, went to the Joint Powers Water Board meeting earlier today, and also the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting today. And it was passed out there that on March the second, Advanced Casper is going to be holding an entrepreneurial boot camp. And so anybody that's interested in starting their own business or being an entrepreneur, this might be a good thing to check into. And it is March the second over at the incubator. And you can check advancedcasper.com and find out any more information about it.
Thank you. Counselor Haskins?
My Health Department meeting this month was sadly canceled, so I don't have anything this week.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pollock?
Thank you. I've had a number of meetings since I last saw you all, so I'll give you an update first on MPO. We covered quite a few things that were relevant to the City of Casper in our last MPO meeting. We just approved the Transit Safety Plan. That's part of a new requirement that our Transit Department put together. Good thing to have in place anyway, so thank you for doing that. We will have, we'll be hearing from the folks doing the electric vehicle fleet conversion study. They're going to meet with us at the February twenty-eighth work session. And because the work session doesn't involve any opportunity for public comment, they are going to meet with folks out in the atrium. The consultants will be there, as well as members of the MPO, to just address any public questions or comments about the study. So folks will have an opportunity to engage with them there on February twenty-eighth. I have a lot of things, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. We're going to do, we're doing a new study that's never been done here before, a non-motorized traffic count study. So that'll be happening this spring. Helps strengthen some of our grant writing capabilities when it comes to trails, also pedestrian safety items, you know, how we get funding for road improvements that might involve intersections and pedestrian safety elements thereof. So that'll be really exciting to see. And so if any of you all have particular areas of town where you're interested to see what the non-motorized traffic looks like, if you'll send those to me, I can get them to the MPO. And we received an update from YDOT about the First and Poplar Project that will be coming down in a little while, that the city has some participation in with their, some of the pedestrian add-ons and that sort of thing. So it was action-packed MPO. If anybody has any further questions about that, I'm happy to chat with you later. And I also went to AMACO reuse agreement, Joint Powers Board meeting, and a couple of special meetings to continue to discuss updates and upgrades to the Three Crowns Clubhouse. And so that project is moving forward, and we're very excited about that. And then I think Vice Mayor is going to do LGBTQ advisory, so I don't have to keep talking to you all. So, but I also did attend that meeting, so. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Inger Breton?
Went to the Contractor Board meeting last Thursday. So far, year-to-date, zero new building permits for new homes to be built yet. So hopefully that'll get geared up a little bit. Permits for just this year, it's only February, it's only a hundred and thirty-eight permits issued. But from July first through January thirty-first, there's been nineteen-hundred-and-forty-one permits issued. So hopefully we'll start getting some houses built and some things moving along. And then also, these roads are brutal. I think everybody should stay put and watch for what the police are saying, whether if you have to stay home and stay put and stay safe.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen?
I do have something. I attended the Old Yellowstone District Architectural Board meeting and just to review some upcoming projects that they have going on over there. And can't say anything else about it, but that I went.
Very good.
I came, I told.
Thank you. Counselor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Counselor Inger Breton for the update on contracting stuff. If you want more of those awesome statistics, our commercial building reports in page eight of our info packet from the last week. I always really like reading it, if you're into that sort of thing. I missed our Casper Housing Authority Board meeting this last week, but I did connect with the Executive Director, Kim, earlier today. If you read that commercial building report, you'll see that the expected completion for Liberty Square is expected April, the first building, you know, they plan on hoping to rent it out by April first. And then the second building will be done by May or June, so just shortly after that. So just nearing the finish line, they're about done with that project. They were in the National HUD Happenings Newsletter for the fourth time in a row. That's in the last fourteen months. So shout out to them again. They're, you know, they're obviously taking notice. You know, the people on the national stage are recognizing how good of a job our local Casper Housing Authority is doing. And so it's cool to see them recognized so often for the work they're doing. They just recently did the Project Homeless Connect. That was why they were recognized in this most recent National HUD happenings. They had eighty, I think, people come through for Project Homeless Connect, pulled together a lot of volunteers, really good work they do. And then they're also working on their WCDAC, CBD, G funding. That's for the renovation of the Old Willard School. They're expecting to have notice to proceed to bid here in the next thirty days. So finally, working through all the red tape and about to start getting some work done over there. The only other thing I have is, I'm sure everyone in this room has seen the train derailment news in Ohio. It's been awful to see the impact that's had on their citizens, their primary water source, the surrounding environment. And so I didn't know if there was any ability for us, if we get any sort of health or status reports from the train operators in our area, but I would be curious if we have any sort of oversight or if there's any sort of transparency as far as the payload, the safety, the condition of the railroads, the, you know, workplace practices for the employees. I was hoping, you know, I don't know if there's any information out there in that regard, but considering what's going on over in Ohio. And I realize that lots of trains running in this country, this happens very rarely, but I wouldn't ever want anything like that to happen to Casper. So I'm just kind of curious what sort of access we have to information. So I don't know who that's pointed out specifically, but I'd just be curious. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. As Counselor Pollock said, we attended the LGBTQ Committee meeting on Friday. It was a really good meeting. They are preparing and prepping for their March twenty-eighth work session, where they're going to kind of update us on a few things. Just kind of a little bit of that. They're going to talk a bit about state legislation, the effects on anti-LGBTQ bills that have been out. I think they're talking to us a little bit about more about the nondiscrimination ordinance and how that's been working. And just kind of giving us an update on the work that they've been doing and give us kind of an overview of everything. Sergeant Sodelli gave us a little bit of a quick update as well, saying that there's really not been any issues as far as people saying that there's been any laws broken pertaining to that ordinance. So that's a good thing. So they're feeling really good about, you know, making sure that they're maintaining it and being, and utilizing that when if and when it needs to be used. So also, they're also talking about possibly nondiscrimination ordinance initiatives in the surrounding areas, possibly in the Mills, Evansville, bar none municipalities, but kind of broader, and maybe even looking at the county, how that looks. So that's a conversation that they'll, I think they're going to be doing with us as well. Just an update also on involvement and participation in the June Pride, which is coming down quickly as well. So, did I miss anything?
Don't believe so, but I think the work session has been moved to the seventh instead of the-
Excuse me. The seventh. I was reading off the notes here, so, sorry. They'll be here the March, on March seventh. Thank you so much for that clarification. It was a really good meeting. It's a great group of people that are dedicated and continuing to bring some awareness and work in the community. Stay safe, please, in the next couple days. Obviously, it's going to be really cold. The streets are going to be really cruddy. Just be safe when you're going and doing those things out and about. Travel if you just need to. And then I always do this because it's so incredibly important, especially please shovel your walks, if you're able to physically, obviously. If you need help, ask a neighbor. But it's really important for a lot of people that, you know, there's kids that are walking on the sidewalks to school, there's the mail carriers. Just take the time. It's a thoughtful thing to do, to try to keep up on that. So if you can do it, please do it. Please shovel your sidewalks. Onto your lawns, right?
Not into the streets.
Not into the streets. Not into the streets. Counselor Kathy?
Water your dandelion.
Anyway, that's all I got.
That's where I shovel it, is where my lawn.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on that with the snow. I was on my way here tonight, I was at the light at Fifteenth and McKinley, heading north, and the light turned green, and I was the first one, but I sat there for a minute because I saw a car coming down the hill that didn't look like it was going to be able to stop. And the people behind me were honking, and I just waited, and sure enough, it slid right through the intersection, which would have taken me out. So they're already slick, we got to slow down. I mean, they were just going way too fast for that hill, and so slow down, be aware. Which brings me to our Joint Powers Water Board meeting today. We are well above average to the tune of a hundred and seventy million gallons of water that we've sold more in the last twelve months, and that's basically due to what I would anticipate happening tomorrow and tomorrow night, and that's running your faucets. We're going to be nineteen below zero tomorrow night, and I believe a high of minus four on Thursday. And then Friday, of course, it breaks and we're back to thirty degrees, but the next two days are going to be really cold, bitter cold, so you might run your tap water and save yourself a lot of headaches if you can. Also, at that Joint Powers Water Board, I'm going to toot on our CFO, Jill. Last year, the investments that the Joint Powers Water Board was able to bring in was a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars. And due to her guidance and YO Star, this year, we are already over a hundred thousand dollars in interest earned. So praise you for your guidance, and that's been just a wonderful addition to the Joint Powers Water Board, so thank you for that. Our police awards, two thousand twenty-two police awards are coming up, I think, next week, Chief, right?
This Friday.
This Friday? Okay, so you all got an invite if you wish to attend and give thumbs up to our police folks to see them get recognized. State wrestling was not canceled, it will go on, it starts tomorrow. Preliminary matches, I think, tomorrow or Thursday, but anyway, most of the teams are already here, they got ahead of the weather, and so they're going to be here. It's going to be a very busy weekend, which is, can be unfortunate based on the weather, but because of that, we've decided to keep the city open because we're going to have people everywhere. We've just got to slow down, we've got to take extra time, we've got to be careful, the main arteries will be cleaned. We will relook at it first thing in the morning, and unless something catastrophic happens, the city will stay open. Patty Robeson wanted to give her thanks to the city manager's office. I had, she had sent me an email, and I called you about the nativity scene still up, and it has been put away. She was very thankful for that and wanted to make sure that those thanks were passed on, so. May is Jewish Heritage Month, and I know we have a gentleman that generally comes, so I thought it'd be nice to give him a shout out. And I attended a fundraiser Sunday at Backwards for the Casper Humane Society, which was just an overwhelmingly successful venture. They raised a bunch of money, and the place was packed, and so good for the animals. So if you're looking to adopt between the Humane Society and Metro, we've got lots of animals available. I toured Metro last week. I just went on my own and walked through, and there's some pretty nice little dogs in there, and it's kind of heartbreaking, you want to take them all home, but of course, that's not possible. But I think staff-wise, they're very happy with where they're at, they're starting to kind of get some good people working in there, but there's lots of animals that need a home, so if you're looking, now's the time to get them out of there, because it's pretty lonely up there and loud, and some of them just tower from all the barking and the noise. But anyway, that's all I have. So a notice of executive session to take place at this date and during this time was given. We have matters to discuss regarding land acquisition, correct? And therefore, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathy, seconded by Counselor Pollock. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
We are adjourned.